Sorry, I had to hit that hard to get the cameras going. Good morning, welcome to the May 21 Eugene City Planning Commission meeting. We have a very full schedule today, so we're gonna start it up with public comment. Planning Commission reserves 10 minutes at the beginning of each meeting for public comment. The public may comment on any matter except for items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record has been closed. Generally, time limit is three minutes, however, we may reserve options to make it shorter. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak? Doesn't see anybody here, mostly staff in the room today. Okay, then we'll move on to IATMB, which is the work session on the transportation system development charges.
Good morning, I'm Dan Kaler. We were here back in September, it was myself, Doug Glardy, who's your consultant, and Eric, and myself and Eric. So the goal was to give you an update, what has happened since September. The key thing is we derived a cost per trip, which was kind of the key decision point of letting the public know where we stand with the cost per trip, and also talk about some of the incentives that we're proposing to encourage a specific type of development. So I'll provide at least the first part of our presentation, provide an overview for the reasons, and give you a better description for the methodology and the actual fee calculation approach. And also give a summary of how we compare it with other communities. Then Eric will have several slides devoted towards the proposed incentives. And lastly, I'll just give an overview of where we're going from here. So there's three key reasons for the FD. The first being to align with the goals of Envision Eugene. The goal for efficient transportation, affordable housing, and compact development. The second goal, or the second reason was to provide a source of funding to enable the capacity increasing projects within the transportation system plan. The transportation system plan was intended to be a planning horizon up until the year 2035. The third key reason was compliance with some of the recent amendments to the Oregon revised statute. In particular, there's requirement that the SDC be based upon an adopted plan list. So in this case, we're gonna have an adopted TSDC project plan list. This slide kind of gets into why we collect. The key thing is we're trying to recover past investment for infrastructure that still has capacity to serve growth, as well as the ability to collect fee, which would help support future growth, or future projects that would support growth. So with the methodology, we decided to follow our current approach of having a portion of the fee be targeted towards improvement, as well as a portion of the fee devoted towards the reimbursement type of fees. So the key thing is with improvements, basically supporting our planned projects, in this case directs it forward to those capacity increasing projects from our transportation system plan. And the reimbursement component is just the recovery of past investment in current transportation system infrastructure that has capacity to serve future growth. So as an example, like with the reimbursement fee, we have pavement preservation projects that are rehabilitating existing infrastructure that would still be available to serve growth. This slide just kind of conveys some of the math that goes into deriving our cost per trip. The key thing here is we've identified what are the eligible costs. So with a future project, it's just the portion of that project that's serving growth. And for the reimbursement components, examining existing infrastructure and determining the cost that was devoted to that investment that's going to serve growth. And then we're looking at the amount of traffic volume that's incurred by growth over this planning period. And then the resultant is a cost per trip. So in looking at $2,018, the value of those transportation infrastructure costs is about $134 million. And over that planning period, we're forecasting approximately 41,000 vehicle trips. So this is for us is a PM peak hour trip, on that 4:00 to 6:00 PM time slot. And then the resultant is the actual figure now of $3,272 for the cost per trip. And that cost per trip is basically, it's allocated depending on the type of land use. For example, with single family, the PM peak hour trip is one trip, so the TSDC for single families is at $3,272. Whereas with multifamily, it's based upon the number of units. So in a multifamily, the coefficient is .58 trips per unit. So with 100 unit types of development, that equates to roughly about $190,000 transportation Restaurants are based upon square footers. So an example, the 1,500 square foot restaurant, the proposed fee would be roughly about $37,000. Now, comparing where we stand with other communities, the chart here reflects 2017 values for existing communities. So looking at the far left, it shows our 2017 rate, or our current rate of $2,100. You can see it's similar to Salem, but certainly below that of Springfield, Beaverton, and Gresham. So our proposed 2018 SDC fee for transportation would be $32.72, which is more in alignment with Springfield. It's getting closer to Gresham and Beaverton, but in our case, these are in direct relationship to our project costs that we're anticipating over this planning, planning horizon, of Directly related to our planned projects that are intended to serve growth. So the next slide deals with some of the proposed incentives, and I'll have Eric describe where we've gone since our last meeting.
Sure. So there's actually not a whole lot of change since we last presented to you on the objectives and incentives. But you'll remember that we are targeting these three pillars of Envision Eugene. So housing affordable at all income levels, planning for climate change and energy resilience, and promoting compact urban development and efficient transportation options. So the incentives that we're proposing as part of this methodology are really meant to promote the community vision and further those objectives. We thought it would be useful just to review some of the existing transportation system development charge incentives that aren't already on the books in Eugene. So there's a TDM, or Transportation Demand Management incentive, already adopted by council and part of our framework for assessing TSDCs. And so when a developer reduces vehicle trips to their development, they get a corresponding reduction in their TSDC assessment. Similarly, nodal development, those were developed before Envision Eugene, and it provides a 10% reduction for the TSDC for developments within those nodes that were identified around There is a 100% credit for redevelopment in the downtown and the West University commercial areas. So this was designed to encourage tenant infill and to support new businesses in those areas, reducing the barriers to entry in those locations. And we also have a 100% exemption for low-income housing projects. That covers all SDCs, so it's not just the transportation SDC, but wastewater, parks, and the other SDCs that are assessed. So the proposed incentives will support development along the Envision Eugene key corridors, support proximity to frequent transit networks, so that's the FTN that's adopted by LTD, Berlin Transit District. And then we're also proposing a transportation demand management bonus. So on top of the TDM incentive that's already part of code, there would be an additional bonus reduction for developers who are willing to discourage vehicle trips and improve walkability and cycling to their facilities. So this is the downtown area where we're proposing a 30% reduction. This is the, either the Envision Eugene key corridors, where there would be a 15% reduction. And then this is the quarter and half mile buffers around LTD's frequent transit network, where there'd be a 10 or 5% reduction, depending how close you are to the frequent transit network. These all roll up into this table. It should be noted that no development would receive more than 50% TSDC, more than a 50% reduction in their TSDC. And these are cumulative. So if a development is downtown, it would get 30%. If it is within a quarter mile of the FTN, then it would get an additional 10%. And then if they do something to reduce vehicle trips to their development, they'd get an additional 10. So all of that rolled up together would be 50%. But that's the maximum that a development could get. So if they were out, if that same development is outside of the downtown core, they'd only get the 15%, and then they would get the 10 and the 10, so that would get them to 35%. In addition to those location-based incentives, we're also proposing a 50% reduction in the transportation SDC for all secondary dwelling units in the city. And that would not be location-based, it would be across the city in an effort to support housing options and affordability.
So since our last meeting, we did have a council work session in February. Shortly after that, we did issue a 90-day notice to interested parties for a public hearing that we have slated for June 18. Also, since that time, we've had a variety of other outreach events. Most recently, we met with the Active Transportation Group. Prior to that, we met with the Builders Association. Tomorrow, we'll be meeting with Neighborhood Leadership Council, and then early June, we'll be meeting with Chamber of Commerce. So similar term meeting today with you, we're providing an update of where we've moved since prior outreach meetings. Additionally, we published the proposed methodology on our internet page, as well as hard copies available at the City Manager's Office, as well as Engineering Office. And as mentioned, we will have our public hearing in June, June 18. And then with the thought of having an action meeting on July 23, and then implementation shortly thereafter. So with that, I'll open. Any questions, comments, or suggestions?
Great. Mr. Taylor, then Willis Coe. Will this go down the line?
Thank you. That was really clear. Two questions is, can you, can you give us an idea of what kind of feedback you've gotten so far?
Yeah, well, kind of two ranges of thoughts. Like with the home builders, you know, they thought that where we stood now with our rate structure still was, still too high. And other, other municipal, like with Active Transportation, they're certainly looking at, you know, acquiring additional fees to support their interests. So it's two competing interests. I think as I look at it now, it's really project-based. We're looking at, you know, what we're really planning to develop, so it's more factual in nature of, here's a project that we've slated to construct, and then here's the associated cost of that.
Okay. And then one other question. Where did you remind me, I think you've mentioned it during your documentation or in the last presentation, where did you come up with the percentages again? Are they based on another jurisdiction, or is it fee, just to have an understanding?
The percentage for the incentives?
Sorry, yes, for the incentives.
Yeah, so we, when we were presented with the opportunity to create some incentives through the TSDC, we looked at different communities and what they were doing with their impact fees, and how they were incentivizing development. And we looked at Bellingham, where they had a similar model, up to 50% reduction, and they had different criteria that built on each other to build up to that maximum of 50%. Where we got the 30% for downtown versus 15% along key corridors, that was more looking at the, you know, looking at the, not wanting to go more than 50% and looking at the value of a downtown development versus a key corridor development, versus developments in other parts of the city. So it was a bit of a estimate of what the, you know, how reflective those developments are at the community vision.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Randall? I have a question and a comment. First question, on the low-income 100% reduction, is that just for subsidized housing, or is that based on a rent level compared to the market? So if I, like a private developer built something, agreed to keep rents low, or whatever, would that qualify for that?
I think the intention is, the tenant had to meet whatever income threshold, not sure, well, range, range in SDCs, our FDC.
I follow the range there.
Yeah, there's criteria for the, the income level of tenants.
The low-income housing reductions are for all the local SDCs, so it doesn't include the regional wastewater, but includes all the local and the administrative fees. And those are for developments that have gone through planning a low-income housing program. And so Ellen Mae Galloay is in charge of that, and so she reviews for applicability and makes sure that they will be maintaining low-income housing for, I think, 25 years?
20, I think it's 20.
20?
I think it's 20 years.
So, and, and there are then documents that she needs and to make sure that this is insured. And so then she informs the SDC group that, hey, we got a low-income housing project, and then we can give the credits.
So it's based on tenant's income and on the rent levels for that project?
I believe so, but I'm not a part of that, part of the review.
But it doesn't necessarily have to be like a HUD project or federally funded?
Yes.
It could be a private development that they just agreed to?
Correct. We even had one that was a secondary dwelling unit, but they were, they agreed that they were going to keep it open for low-income housing. So there's a variety of options available.
Thank you. That actually was a pretty good segue into my comment, which is about the secondary dwelling units and the 50% reduction. And it seems to me that if we're looking for those three pillars of compact development, the climate ordinance, and affordability, and it said that the incentive was modeled on programs in Portland and Springfield, although both of those give 100% waiver of all SDC fees, I'm not sure how that's really modeled after that. It seems like we're just reducing it 50%. And I guess my comment would be, it seems like if we're really wanting to encourage that infill in secondary dwellings, we maybe should consider a little more incentive for SDUs.
Mr. Jaworski.
Yeah, three quick ones. Of the existing, with their intentions to do certain things concerning different types of development and where, how effective has the incentives been?
I'm not certain if we have a dollar amount, but I'm really geared probably towards downtown. It's probably been the key benefactor. With nodal developments, I can't speak as how it compares to the downtown.
I don't know that I have any numbers, but it definitely does help out with the nodal areas and, and the compact residential development in those areas.
Okay. You described in great detail how you developed the formula to come up with the dollar allocations per various types, of which these percentages would be applied. How much flexibility did you allow when you developed that in your project plan, saying if, wow, these incentives are so successful, we've had all this development, we've lost millions of dollars of projected SDC fees? How do you allow for that in your project plan, or did you allow for that flexibility if it is very successful?
Yeah, yeah. We didn't allow for any, I guess, overage to account for the, you know, the lost revenue for incentives. So whatever incentives are granted would just be, potentially, if you were projects, we'd be able to construct from a TSDC project plan list. But it, it is a loss, but at the same time, I guess it's, to recognize loss, it's gonna encourage certain type of development.
And if I may, the part of the rationale for it is that these developments are along areas that are already served by roads, transit, bike, ped. That infrastructure is already in place, and they have an incremental demand on the system, but it's lower than developments outside of those areas where we already are providing service.
Okay. Final question. In your project plan 2018 for 2035 or 20-year projects, is that flexible that others can be added to it, as once it's developed or adopted by the council?
Yeah, yeah. Certainly, it's a living document, we can, there are requirements, so if we add projects, and we in turn also want to increase the trip rate, that we have to go through, you know, a process of informing interested parties of, we're adding a certain number of projects, and therefore, trip rate would be increased. Certainly has to be recognized as an increase, and then if there's any interest or concerns, we go through another type of process where we have a public hearing to evaluate the merit of increasing trip rate.
And that would take some time.
Yeah. Yeah, it couldn't be, it couldn't be adopted until we go through the necessary ORS requirements of having a public hearing and having a formal adoption of any type of increase.
Well, that gets back to my prior question. That's where my real issue is. If this is highly successful, there'll be a lot of needed projects, that's why they're on that plan, and may not get built within a certain timeframe that people expected them to. And, okay, thank you.
Yeah, it's one of those plus-minuses. You want to encourage certain types of growth, but at the same time, there might be, you know, a loss to our pool of funds to create, create certain projects. And going back to your question, SDCs, maybe if we want to make a way to see how much secondary dwelling units, SDUs, how many, how many we have. If it is quite an upper, and it's 100%, you know, reduction, and we're, we're maybe taking a greater loss than maybe what we anticipated, but.
We've had about half a dozen in the last three years, so.
Okay.
And just to respond to your answer about where they're located, where existing other modes are, that doesn't necessarily apply to SDUs?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. I was thinking of the location-based incentives.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, actually, I have similar questions to Commissioner Jaworski, because I was wondering about if during the planning period, you decided you need some other improvements that weren't on the list, or you need to change the priority because of changes in use, or whatever, how that would work, and, you know, what, I mean, would it likely be that you would do an update in 10 years, or something like that? In other words, where these things might be revisited, including these, you know, charges?
That question came with previous, we didn't have really a planned scenario of how frequently we'd update our TSDC project list. I think it's kind of more of, you know, how development occurs, we need to either add or rethink where we're focusing our projects.
So there's not any, there's not any plan on a timeframe of evaluating it 10 years? You just do it ad hoc, depending on what? And I was gonna say, I'm fine with the 50% reduction on SDC, secondary dwelling, because that's the maximum you're allowing for people developing in downtown and on the corridors, and especially where, you know, where costs would also be very low. Otherwise, I think we'd have concerns from people saying, why is this getting higher than 50%, yet my development in downtown or on a corridor, meeting all these criteria, is I'm getting 50% rather than 100%? So I'm comfortable with that, for that reason.
Okay. I've got several different things that I need questions answered on. First off, I guess the biggest one is, how changeable are this? If you get a lot of public input, you put up a lot of things where you're gonna go to outreach, is there a process for implementing changes to this if the outreach leads you to say, we've gotten this wrong?
Yeah, certainly, we would present that, we do have a council work session prior to the public hearing, so we would bring forward any type of feedback. So if there was very concern for certain incentives, we express that and get council's guidance.
Okay. So for me, a couple of things that stand out. One is, I concur with Commissioner Randall, I think it should be 100% on SDUs. If you look at the map and the thing, the areas that are right for SDUs, a lot of them are outside of that map, you know, where there are other incentives might happen. And considering the community, you know, what the community is talking about with SDUs, I think to be in lockstep with Springfield would be appropriate. Getting to the questions of the plan list, so we can use SDCs for increased capacity, the one half of them for increased capacity. My recollection on the transportation system plan is that there was no plans for increased capacity except for bike, ped-type projects, except for Beltline. Is that correct?
Well, there's other widening projects and.
That, that add to vehi, to car increased capacities?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I can pull from the project plan, that might be a good document to look at real quickly here.
Because that was my understanding on the TSP, that there was, the only, the only capacity increase would, was Beltline.
Yeah, so.
I mean, other than bike lanes and, and those types of things.
Yeah, so this was, I think, an attachment to the.
Yeah.
Page 16.
Yeah.
It's got a list of projects.
So it's got, the first, first table is based on project category, so like street projects here. You can see that it's showing that of the, I want to get over here to far left, the total of 118 million, that gross shares portion to that is, well, if you deduct some of the other funding, is at 26 million. So, yeah, certainly it.
Okay. Then the other thing I was wondering is, when you came up with this table and the future needs, was the new transportation bill from the state considered as a funding source to bring some of that down?
You know, I could maybe defer, I'm uncertain if you want to comment there, Mark?
No, it would be, it'd be more a source of funds to match the SDC. So on any particular project, there's a portion of it that's associated with growth, and you can use your, the improvement fee for that portion, but then you also need to bring money to the table to fund that portion that's serving existing development, so that, so that new revenue could meet that need, rather than bringing down the total cost that new development would pay.
So with those being said, I mean, I'm concerned that we're going to a 33% increase in the trip charge for new developments. And you know, you see it, and you say it's $3,100, but when you put that other slide up there that showed 100 and something thousand dollars for a multifamily unit, or $37,000 for a 1,500 square foot restaurant, you know, so it's not just housing that are paying these transportation system charges. And you saw that the incentives were estimated to bring down approximately $175,000 a year. That's, two restaurants pay for $175,000 a year. I'm concerned that these fees are too high, considering the cost of building houses in this town and our housing crisis. So I guess my question would be, goes back to the first one. If there is outreach that says these, these are too high, if council says, no, we don't want them to be this high, too high, can they do that? Can they say, no, we want to keep them the same? high, can they do that? Can they say, no, we want to keep them the same? Or would you just change the project list and cut things off? How would that work?
Yeah, but I should add, you know, we can express the cost per trip, you know, based on the actual future construction costs, but council has, you know, that's kind of, that's the maximum. They can lower it to whatever, you know, intermediate value they deem appropriate. We're just setting, this is the maximum value that can be legally charged for system development.
Okay. And then I guess the other question is, so this was, for me, it was both mostly based on housing. I didn't see really anything in there until that one slide came up that if it's a commercial redevelopment. So that's trip charges for, if you changed use of a a commercial thing, you would get charged S D Cs. Is that how that works or how? Can you explain that to me?
Like, it's, you know, depending on the land use type. It's the type of vehicles impact by whatever type. So, yeah, certainly if you're going from whatever land use type that's going to add more peak hour trips, then they would have the associated, you know, incremental increase in the S D C.
And is there a way to separate commercial from residential?
So it's all, you know, the.
It's trip charge, trip charge?
Trips is kind of the currency, so to speak.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Round two.
I, I just have two follow-up items. In terms of S DUs, I agree with Commissioner Jaworski and Commissioner Randall. And I think that Commissioner Jaworski's question is a good one, that staff might want to actually do a little preparation for the city council hearing, just in terms of answering the question of some of the past, what was actually taken for granted, so that they have a scale, like what were incentives in the past five years that were actually given? What are the project types? So that there's, because it might not be many. I mean, there's no scale when we're talking about, if you can't answer the question, there isn't an understanding of truly what is the action, actually.
And I guess, yeah, just to be specific, I do advocate 100% reduction on S DUs. And I already have my S D U, so it won't affect me. But I just think that would encourage the development. I think to speak to Commissioner Jaworski's concerns, if we suddenly have all this development occurring because of the incentives, I think the thing we tend to ignore or forget about is that you will now have a proportionally, a proportionate increase in property tax revenue coming in from that development. You know, with MUCD aside, but, you know, just the general development of S DUs or whatever, you're going to have more property tax revenue coming in. And I think the road bonds are part of the property taxes, if I'm remembering that right, and as far as road repair and those sorts of things. So I think we need to keep that in mind as well, that if for some reason we have just a flood of development because of these incentives, we will have a proportionate increase in property taxes coming in. So, you know, don't want to lose sight of that.
Only because other commissioners have. I favor the 50%. Basically because the S DUs that I believe are going to be built, they're going to be not built in these high-impact areas of multifamily housing and 100-some units developments. They're going to be built where there's mainly single-family residents or maybe just a little bit more. And as a result of that, there's going to be impact on those transportation systems around there that aren't your typical S D C charges, but they're going to have to be paid for. And so I'm concerned about that because I don't want to have one drawing from one fund which may or may not match other S D C funds on the certain types of projects they can be used on.
And I just wanted to clarify my understanding. The previous incentive was 100% downtown and now it's going to 50% max, is that right?
No, 100, 100% for commercial redevelopment would remain. I may not have made that clear in my presentation. All of the existing, we're not proposing any changes to the existing incentives. We're adding these new envisioning Eugene incentives.
So for residential, there wasn't incentive before?
There was no, for.
Downtown.
Well, aside from MUCD, there's, there is no, yeah, there's no, there's no S D C incentive downtown.
Okay, so commercially at 100, that's what was confusing to me. So commercial originally at 100%, it's going to stay.
Yeah.
But residential had zero and now it goes to.
Yeah, and the 100% is only for commercial redevelopment. So it's only when a new business or, or an owner changes the use of the property.
Okay.
That has a net increase in vehicle trips.
Okay.
Everything is measured in vehicle trips, even if it's downtown and lots of people are walking or biking.
Right. So if a restaurant changes to a restaurant, there's no change?
That's my understanding, although I'm not an S D C expert.
Yeah. So downtown, we basically look at downtown and the West University area, kind of like giant shopping centers. And so businesses, tenants can come and go and it doesn't really change how that shopping center area functions. So a restaurant could change to a restaurant or to a retail store. But if we get the, an existing space though that changes, say from commercial to residential or the other way, then those ones we do charge for. But the others, commercial to commercial, we've just been giving basically 100% credit.
Okay. And another question. No developments originally had, the incentive was?
10% and that would remain as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the only area that had the high incentive was downtown commercial originally?
Downtown and.
West Union River.
West University.
Yeah.
And by commercial, was that literally for commercial use? In other words, not for any of the residential going on on 13th and.
That, that's my understanding.
It was, it was for more commercial uses that are typical to a shopping center.
Okay. So again, I agree with Commissioner Jaworski because I'm concerned that there could be a push from developers on the corridors and in the central core doing housing, given that they're doing what Envision Eugene wants, our goals, and yet their incentive is smaller than S P C incentive, a single secondary dwelling incentive, the people building out, which could be anywhere, which is just Commissioner Jaworski mentioned, might actually have a more, a larger impact on capacity than it would be if it was in the, in the other areas. So.
I did have another question. On the frequent transit networks, do they have to be built for the incentives to be put in or is it proposed?
Planned, so existing and future.
And so those are the five that basically the moving head is pushing forward of it?
It's bigger than that.
Yeah.
That, that was actually my question.
Okay. And then if, for some reason, so that would be the map that is, is going to be codified. And if, for some reason, the, the, you know, the frequent trans, you know, that's 25 years, if they decide, you know, no, we're not going to do 30th to LCC or whatever, if that falls off, this is still, would be codified?
Yeah, and it would, in that case, need to be updated at some point.
Okay.
That was my question.
Yeah, if L T D changes its long-range plan, then that should be changed as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, one last, and it's in the same area, because the legs to Envision, it came up a long time ago in another area related to parks and incentives for parks, depending on whether within a quarter mile or half a mile. And at that point, that decision, determination was made, it had to be some way that someone could walk that distance. In other words, if there's a freeway or a railroad track that would block you without a, you know, a safe access across the railroad track, then you'd have to measure that, you know, not, it's not, it's not the way a bird flies.
Yeah.
Because that's an important consideration. If you've got a given incentive, it should really be, from my point of view, it should be a case where it's, it actually meets the criteria.
The travel distance, yeah.
Yeah, and in that case, you know, it's not, could be a walkway, but the point is a freeway or a railroad track that's impassable, you know, not passable safely should not, so you should make a note maybe in your, the way you determine that, that it's by, you know, some footpath, you know.
Sure. Another decision that we pondered was whether that buffer should be based upon just encroaching the property or encroaching the structure. So we were more of the opinion that, that buffer would encroach the actual structure versus maybe some.
Well, we.
Meandering of the law just to kind of get the incentive, but.
And during, with parks, because you get it, you got an incentive about open space requirements in the old days, it was, it was a property, not the structure itself.
Okay.
And that, because that makes it easier sometimes in terms of doing that calculation. So anyway, I would just suggest you consider that.
Okay.
Other commissioners might disagree or have a different opinion.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. We do have a full agenda, so I think we'll move on to our next agenda item. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Heather is next with growth monitoring.
Good job, guys. Thanks. By the way, just so everybody knows, apparently the cameras are working and the gavel was to give the operator a visual cue of when to start video.
Got it.
Great. And we, I think we're doubled up on the sound as well, so.
Thank you.
Thanks, Heather, for bringing that.
Sure. Okay. I handed those out at any time, but with the camera stuff, I forgot, so I'll hand those out when I get to that slide. So my name's Heather O'Donnell. I'm with the planning division. For those folks watching today, and I guess today your theme is numbers, because we're going to talk about growth monitoring. Luckily, you'll get a reprieve when Chelsea Hartman talks about updates to the comprehensive plan, so we'll get into some policy framework discussion. So what I wanted to just start with real quick here is this timeline that you saw a couple weeks ago. This is, I think you saw it during the urban reserves and clear and objective standards project updates. So these are the projects that have council directive deadlines at this time. And just wanted to kind of show you where the growth monitoring program fits on that timeline. It's the longest one out, but it's got arrows going both ways because while this is the deadline for our first report to council, the program's going to be ongoing, so it doesn't actually stop. So what I'm going to talk about is why the program's important, give you a little bit of an overview about the program itself and some of the limitations and challenges that we've identified at this point. Show you the timeline, which I'll hand out for the next couple of years, but like I said, it's ongoing, ongoing program. And then, excitingly, show you some examples of some of the work that we've been making progress on with our database system. And then talk about some of the real short-term upcoming steps. And then hopefully we have time for question and answer. So why is the program and growth monitoring in general important? During the Envision Eugene process and during our urban growth boundary planning project, we heard a lot of values and even kind of directives or requests from both the community and from decision makers. And so I'm just going to talk about some of the key ones we heard related to data. And this was related to data we were using and projections we were using back in 2012. And then as we move forward with growth projections and development trend projections. So just starting with projections, projections are just that, they're projections. And so there was a request or an identification that it's really important to check in on those projections on a regular basis and compare them to actual development trends, data that we don't actually have right now. So setting that up going forward. Being resilient. So the idea that if we are able to collect data regularly and check in on it, we're actually putting ourselves in the best position to address when projections or conditions change, rather than the change happening and then we have to look back and kind of scramble. So trying to be ahead of the game. Trust. So the idea that any data that we're using, we want to be transparent with that data, make that data as accessible as possible to the public as well as decision makers. So we all have the same data. We all know what we're dealing with. And then building on that, focus. If we don't have to talk about the quality of the data and questioning that, then we can really have the conversation focus on a lot of the important issues about what strategies we're actually going to use to guide growth in this community, rather than talking about and arguing about really the quality of the data. So those are some of the things that we're trying to address with the program. So in response to some of those comments, in the 2012 recommendation, there are, as you know, our seven pillars or community values. The seventh pillar is about providing for adaptable, flexible, and collaborative implementation as we plan for growth. So a couple of the strategies that were identified in that pillar to implement it were to create an ongoing monitoring system. At least every five years, evaluate the effectiveness of the Envision Eugene strategies for managing growth. And determine whether the comprehensive plan and implementation tools should be adjusted based on the data you're collecting and obviously other policy choices and community values. So putting this pillar and these implementation strategies in the pillar really provide a commitment to the community that we heard them and that we are going to be setting up these, this program in order to do these tasks. We also have, as I mentioned, council direction. So council directed us in 2015 to provide them with the first monitoring report within three years of acknowledgement of our new urban growth boundary. So that happened in January of this year. So that means council consideration of the first report is supposed to happen in January of 2021. And this, what this is, is just an infographic that we did. These are on the web. We did an infographic for all of our pillars. And you can see we relayed here that the first big check-in is in three years. Every five years, per the recommendation, we'll have another big check-in. But then annually, we'll be providing reports about key development trends. So give you a little bit of a program overview. There's several components to the program. The main one we're going to be talking about today is the quantitative collection component of the program, or as I like to call it, the bean counting portion of the program. So here, what we're really talking about is wanting to be able to report on our population growth, the number of people that are coming, the number of people per household census data, the net new number of homes that we've seen built, the number of new jobs, commercial building square footage, like you were talking about earlier. And then I have acres here, how much of our vacant land has been developed since we did our buildable lands inventory in 2012. So some of the key pieces of this quantitative portion of the program is to set up a database collection system. As I mentioned, we, and I'll talk more about this in a couple slides, but we really don't have a system that's tracking development trends, so we've had to build that. We also want to develop a community dashboard. And so the idea there, you've heard us talk about providing information like an onion, where you can get snapshot level outer, outer peel of the onion, snapshot level data. And then if you want to dig deeper, you can kind of unpeel the onion and go down to the core of the onion if you want, depending on what level of data you're interested in. And going to the core of the data will be the technical advisory committee. So this will be a new committee that will be set up. They'll be moving regularly. So this will be a new committee that will be set up, they'll be moving regularly, you heard about them in the urban reserves project update, because that's going to be the first focus of their work, but obviously, there's a relationship there between urban reserves planning and growth monitoring. And then obviously, planning commission review of that data, input and feedback on that, and then eventually, city council recommendation if we need to adjust our strategies. The other part about the community dashboard that I want to mention is that while we have these committees and commissions and city council, those are opportunities for people to engage. The idea with the community dashboard is also to be public-facing, it'll be online, so the general public, it just gives them another tool to engage with the data and how we're growing. So that's, it's really pointed primarily at the general public. The companion part to the quantitative collection is a qualitative assessment, we haven't done a lot of work on that yet, just some research, but the idea would be looking at kind of some of the more squishy things like development compatibility, equity, and access to housing, health, so some of the things that are actually going to come out of the comprehensive, the next comprehensive plan chapters. And then finally, just like we don't want our vision to sit on the shelf, we also don't want this program to sit on the shelf and not, you know, look at it and adjust it, so we'll regularly be evaluating how the data collection is going, and are we getting the information we need, and making tweaks as we go. So you see here, we've got this kind of simplified graphic of collecting data, reporting on results, comparing our projections and assumptions to the actual results, and then adjusting our strategies if needed. So that's kind of the idea. Some of the limitations and challenges, I think it's really important to point out, like I said, this is all new to us, we do not have a growth monitoring program, we're not, other than manually tracking development trends, we don't do that on a regular basis, so we are going to make mistakes as we're setting up this program, that's why we want to evaluate it and adjust it as we go. For the database system that we're setting up, some of the challenges we've seen, which I'll talk a little bit more about, are very technical in nature, we've got a lot of databases with a lot of data, they're not interconnected, which makes it really hard to report on them. You guys, some of you are probably familiar with the fact that land, a tax lot number is how we identify parcels in the city, and those can change over time, and so it makes it difficult to track development on a piece of property over time. So those are some of the things we're trying to address. We're also automating a number of our processes, as well as the reports that will be coming out of this, and so there's some generalization or smoothing that can happen, and so we're trying to be careful with that and make sure numbers don't get too generalized. And then on the flip side, we also know that some of our data will be still manual input, and so human error, there's always human error with manual input, so trying to figure out ways to reduce the opportunities for that error to happen. And then finally, data is not going to tell us the answer. So I found this little comic here, thank you for collecting the additional data we requested, unfortunately, it still doesn't give us the answer we want, and I would add on there, or tell us what to do, right? Because the data is going to help us inform our decisions as we go forward, but there's community values, community input, all of it together is going to help us, just like it did in Envision Eugene, figure out how to guide growth in this community. All right, so pass this out.
I was going to ask, since these mics are working, should you really be talking to one of these?
They're not here.
It's this one.
Yeah.
We're doubled up.
Oh, okay. Doubled up that way. I just wanted to make sure we thought this was working.
Yeah. I'm trying to project for everything we're recording here. And there's timelines over on the table over there as well. So like I mentioned, this is an ongoing program, but what we've done here is mapped out the next three years, 2018 through the, well, the beginning of 2021. This first year here in 2018 is focusing on some of the key pieces of the data collection system that I'll talk about in a bit. And in order to develop those things, a key, there we go, key piece is that we needed to set up a charter with our information systems division, our IT staff, are instrumental in doing that work, they're not here, they're competing, they're working on a lot of stuff right now, but I know they're going to watch this meeting, so I wanted to really give them a shout out. I also wanted to acknowledge Thea in the front row, she is a GIS planner who's just dived right into working on the buildable lands inventory. Mike and Joel in the second row there are with Planning and Development's technical team, and so we have a bunch of people that are working on this. I just kind of wanted to emphasize the number, there's a big commitment, and also the inter-divisional workings, Building and Permit Services, Planning Division, Community Development, it's taking a village to lift this data collection system off the ground. So like I said, in this first year, we've got a web application that we're developing and launching, we've got a data warehouse that I'll talk more about, that we're working on, and then working up a framework for a series of reports. And when I say reports here, I'm really talking about charts that have underlying tables of data in them. We'll also be starting to research the public engagement tool, or what I'm calling the community dashboard, and then recruitment for the Envision Eugene Technical Advisory Committee. So this work is all trying to happen in anticipation of the technical advisory committees starting to look at the first of a series of those reports in early 2019. And then we built in about a year for that group to look at the reports coming out of the data collection system, and then to be able to get back any changes to the report format or the data collection to IT staff, really, to help us kind of refine that. And then we'll be giving you updates throughout, but we hope to have a refined set of reports for you to look at in early 2020, with an early target of getting the first report to council in spring of 2020. But that is also because we've never done this before, and we're trying to really provide ourselves some buffers in case things go askew. The actual deadline for getting a report to council is January of 2021. So now I'm going to jump into the weeds a little bit, just to prepare you for when we start coming back to you with lots of data. But this is, you don't need to know all of the components, but what I just want to talk about a little bit is kind of our vision for the data collection system. So on the left side are several databases that, as you can see, there's no arrows in between them, they're not interconnected, they don't talk to each other. There's even additional ones that we don't have up here. On the right-hand side is the reporting we want to do. We want to do ad hoc reports, you know, just random reports that somebody might want to know, we also want to do standardized annual reports, and we want to do a community dashboard that gives people, you know, like I said, that high-level data, and then they can dig down into it. In order to be able to do this, we need to have what's, we're calling a data warehouse, where we can put all that data together and to be able to report on it. And so I'll just give you an example of one of the things that this would allow us to do. So in 2012, imagine that we identified a 10-acre piece of low-density residential land as vacant, and it had one map and tax lot number. And then in 2013, so we're into our planning period, our 20-year planning period, it's subdivided, so each of those individual lots got a new map and tax lot number. And then in 2014, those building permits started coming in on each of those lots. And so what we want to be able to do, let's say in 2015, is say, how much of our vacant land is developed? Well, since we don't have a connection right now between the 2012, the big parent lot in 2012 under map and tax lot number 100, and all of these little lots that are now developing, we can't run that report. Doing this collection system will help us do that, so that at the end of the year, if five of those lots developed, we should be able to say, oh, well, you know, two acres of our vacant lot there developed. So that's the goal, to help us give us a running total of our vacant land, the number of units that, housing units that have come in, how dense they are, some of the questions that we had to make projections about. This is an internal web application that I mentioned that we're going to be developing, so pay no attention to the detail, but the point is, is that we're creating a system to be able to track things like the density of housing as it comes in, rather than having to do a GIS analysis and do it manually. So it'll be real-time data, which is pretty exciting. And then, you know, how many homes, on what zoning is it happening, on what plan designation, those kinds of things, what is it on vacant land or developed land? And then this, I know you can't read, which is fine, but this is just to give you an idea, just to set up that web application that I just showed you, this is kind of a complex number of tables that you have to put together, and I think this is only a snapshot of all the tables that we need to set up that system. So that's why it takes a while, it's a complicated process, and this is just for one piece of the data collection system. And then another piece of the system I mentioned is setting up these reports or these kind of snapshot charts that, when you click on them, then we'll have the underlying data associated with them. So obviously, the numbers are not accurate. I always hesitate to put anything like this up, we just put data in there for testing to see if this collection system could really work. Can we really get our buildable lands inventory, you see undeveloped, developed, committed, partially vacant, you remember those terms, and then be able to connect that to our building permits if we create this data warehouse, and it looks like we can. So this is pretty exciting. This is all mock-up stuff, we're still obviously in the testing, but it's pretty exciting. So upcoming steps, as was mentioned, during urban reserves, we're going to be starting recruitment this summer for the Envision Eugene Technical Advisory Committee. Their first focus will be on urban reserves, anticipating them in early 2019 to start working on growth monitoring reports. We'll be giving an update, like, we're giving an update to you, to city council, at some point, and then also this summer, we'll be researching the community dashboard, what software platform we could use for that. If you've seen the budget software, that's an example of kind of a dashboard, where you get the high-level data and then you can drill down. And then for the rest of this year, we'll be continuing to refine those pieces that I showed you with the data collection system, the web application, the data warehouse, the reports, there's several other pieces, and then testing the heck out of it, because it's complicated, there's a lot of data, and so we want to make sure we get it right before we start posting information to the technical advisory committee.
Okay. We're going to go opposite way this time, we'll start with Commissioner May.
I'd compliment you on a very well put-together presentation.
Great.
Very illuminating and clear, and I, at this point, I don't really have any, I have some questions, but they're not compelling more interest, but not moving the discussion forward. Thank you.
Mr. Zorsky.
Yeah, I agree, it's well put together, I can assume that a lot of work, what I've seen has gone into this, but some of the terminology that you're using may have answered a couple of questions I'm going to have, but it's just that I may focus in a different way. You indicate in here that you're going to be looking at types of housing. I didn't see in there specifically, and it's a big issue right now, secondary dwelling units.
Oh, yeah.
Are you going to be tracking them? Okay, that's, okay. The second important thing to me is when you track these is where. In other words, where are these units being built? Not just, they're on vacant land and it's buildable land, because then I see that could be related to say, look at where this growth and the type of development that's occurred, and how does that relate to what we want, like transit corridors, or where SDCs are being applied and incentives? If it isn't done in that way, then it can't be used on where our policies are going. It's just data, and I've worked in a lot of places where you have fantastic data, but you never know what to use it for, but it's like, wow. So that's the kind of questions I have, is it going in that direction?
Yes, yep, and that's a really good example of something that we weren't really able to do beforehand. So there is no spatial or mapping component associated with building permits right now, and so if we want to run, how many dwelling units have we seen on our corridors, it's, we have to go right into GIS, which is a geographic information system, we have to do a manual query, it's not something we can get out of the building permit system. And so by putting this together, the goal is, is that we'll be able to have some stock reports, and that might be one of them, how many, what kind of development are we seeing along our corridors or by neighborhood, that we can press a button and run those reports? And then the ad hoc reports would be something that we can do separately, I want to know how many dwelling units that we're seeing just on this one corridor, that might be more of a ad hoc or unique report that we would be able to do. It just would, yeah, we would be able to do it.
Okay, I know that you had mentioned when you were talking to GIS, and you refer to it now. I guess my question is, where I worked before, being the chair of the MPO, and we ran the MPO, does your MPO, we had, does your MPO have their own GIS system, so that they took what was developed, and then they added on their own layers, and so they could use it for transportation modeling when development occurred here, how would that impact?
So.
Corridors, roads, streets, what would happen if you put 100 units here and there, that kind of thing?
Yeah, there is a model that uses GIS and Excel, and, you know, it's an integrated model that I believe is run through, when councils, governments on behalf of the MPO for transportation modeling, and they are also looking at a model for land use.
So you're going to be coordinating with them?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, ours is not really a model, it's just the data that would help inform the inputs into the model.
Well, I like to wear it, because I think it's easier for me to, instead of looking at tables of data, to look at visuals and say, this, here's all this growth occurring here in the type, and here's this kind of growth occurring there, and what's happening.
Yeah, yep, and so just, again, thinking about limitations and challenges and wanting to be really upfront, there's a whole bunch, as you guys know, we always talk about, oh, we'll capture that in monitoring, right? And I hear that a lot, and so what we've had to do, there's a big long list of everything we want to monitor, and then there's things like that, that we don't even know necessarily where we're going to want to report, what area, you know, that's something that happens in the future. So we've had to prioritize and make sure that we're really focusing on the key data and the projections and the assumptions that we use in Envision Eugene, and then kind of work on other components as we go. So we're trying to, trying to chunk it out in a way that kind of gets the high-priority stuff first, and then moves into more detail.
Okay. Well, after decades of being reactive, it is so nice to see us being proactive with our growth and that, so I just wanted to say that upfront, and also commend you on your presentation as well, as far as putting it together. A question that I have, on the data warehouse, are we developing that ourselves with our in-house IT people?
Yep.
Okay, I am so excited about that, because as an architect with the eBuild system... I am so excited about that because as an architect with the eBuild system that we've instituted here, that I know we developed because we couldn't find anything out there that worked very well, and having worked in other jurisdictions that also have pseudo-eBuild systems, ours is by far way ahead of everybody, at least in Oregon, that I've, that I've seen and experienced. So I'm glad that they're the ones doing it because it'll work really well.
That's great. That's great to hear, and I know that these folks love hearing that because they work on it all the time and making it, tweaking it.
Very happy with eBuild. It's, it works really well.
Yeah, but actually, I can echo just if you need some feedback. It's my experience as well, being in the industry. And great report, and I just have to say, I'm so excited about pulling this information into a quantitative set of information to be able to share with the public as well as, you know, various stakeholder groups, subcommittees, and some council. I think it's, it's important coupled with qualitative, so, so excited. Great job.
Okay, so I have a few questions. Some of them are more policy-type issue ones. As far as the growth monitoring program draft that's in here and the ETAC bylaws and all those types of things, what process is in place to make those finalized? And who, who and when are you going to get input on those?
Yeah, I don't know. Did we talk about that at all at Urban, the Urban Reserves project? Yeah, the process for ETAC or... Yeah, I think we're still in development of what that's going to look like. Yeah.
So, yeah, so I would get, I would say that, you know, going through these and looking at the draft pro, one in here, and the attachments that weren't attached, I went back and looked at them. So one of the attachments was the ETAC's bylaws and stuff like that. And I was sitting on the tack when, when those were kind of developed, and it was kind of like, let's just take a stab at this now, but we'll come back to it. So I think it's important that, one, it gets brought back, if that's...
You mean to...
Well, I think that ETAC needs to go over this.
Oh, yes.
And, and the bylaws.
Yes.
And not, not just say, these are the bylaws, we're going to buy them, because I went through them and saw some areas that need tweaking. So I'm just wondering what the process is for finalizing this draft.
Yeah.
Take it to ETAC, then bring that back. And that, that's kind of chicken and egg.
Yeah.
Because the membership of the ETAC is in the drafts.
Yeah.
So, again, I'm a little concerned about the process there as far as finalizing these drafts.
Yeah, I do think we would want to give them the opportunity to review the bylaws, and we wouldn't just hand them the bylaws. I mean, that was kind of the technical resource groups, you know, taking our experience and saying, here's all the things that'd be really helpful for operating procedures. But yeah, I agree.
Yeah, and, and going over and bringing back the key questions. You know, I mean, you, I think you've identified a lot of the good key questions, but there may be input for more, considering the way, you know, this was 2015 where these, this was developed. Things have developed since 2015 and obviously before 2019, before the first one. Then the second thing that I, I thought was, might be important to track, and I have no idea how we'll do this, but the, the idea of phantom land inventory. Trying to figure out a way to capture, yes, we've got 10 acres in our, in our buildable land inventory. You know, do you say, okay, after 20 years, if that's not, if nothing has happened on that land, do we consider it, you know, phantom land or whatever? Or marginally built? I mean, there could be 10 acres and it's just not buildable because of geotactical or some other things that, you know, a builder might have. Because I know that was one of the things that was brought up early on, you know, when we were doing the, when we were doing the Envision Eugene and the growth.
Mm-hmm, sorry, excuse me.
So I don't know how to capture that, but I think that that might be another key thing to look at.
Yeah, and one of the things that is different here than in other states is our land use framework, right? And so it's pretty specific about what you can consider a prohibitive development constraint and what you can't. It not having, the property not having developed over a certain amount of time at this point isn't something. And, and that, you know, and again, that kind of ended up making sense for us because if you look at the population projections that were in place at the time we drew the urban growth boundary, we're just now catching up to those, right? And so that's why, so it's not that we just didn't have the pressures on the UGB and the vacant land before. Now we're projecting we will over the next 20 years. And I think the other things, other reason that I think they're very, I mean, there's probably a lot of reasons, but another one is that conditions can change, you know? So like, one of the things that we heard was ownership, different types of ownership, maybe that should be a restriction. And public ownership was really the only thing that we considered as a constraint to housing or employment. Still looked at it for government, adding government jobs or whatever the situation was. But ownership can change, you know? So there's, there's a lot of reasons, I think, that the framework is the way it is as, as far as being really specific about what you can actually take off the table. It doesn't mean that we can't look at those things some more, and there's actually a new streamlined framework for doing UGB planning that came into play right when we were adopting our urban growth boundaries. So that's a whole new set of rules that we'll want to look at.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, I want to follow up. Actually, it's a great idea, and it sounds like you, you guys have already incorporated that in your thinking, because the quantitative data is actually going to give the city of Eugene an opportunity to make qualitative assessments based on state planning, why potentially there might be an issue, or it's not, like, it's on a corridor, but maybe it's missed out, because you're just going to be able to pull it up and see it hasn't been developed. So I think it, I think with time, we might actually be able to address what you're talking about and even fine-tune it potentially and use the tools.
Right, like, use it to not necessarily take it off the inventory, but to identify what's wrong.
Ten-four.
And then see if we can fix it.
That's right.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Good point.
Okay, other comments or questions? Okay.
Great, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is the Comprehensive Plan Phase Two.
So I'm Chelsea Hartman. I'm a new Associate Planner with the Planning Division. And I'm from Virginia, just moved here at the end of last year. So I'm really excited to be here for my first work session with y'all today. I'm going to talk a little bit about the Conference of Plans Phase Two and the Draft Project Charter and Public Involvement Plan for that. So similar to the process that you just went through with your work session on Urban Reserves and Clear and Objective. So that line for today, I'm going to talk a little bit about why this is important and how we got to where we are today, and then some highlights of finishing what we started. So briefly going over the Draft Project Charter and Draft Public Involvement Plan, and then talk about your role in the process, and I'll welcome your discussion and input. So why is this important? We recently adopted our UGB in the first phase of our Conference of Plan. Our Conference of Plan is meant to guide our future growth and development with policy language, and currently that's only partly there. When complete, the Eugene Comp Plan will implement our community vision and support and balance the seven pillars of Envision Eugene and address the remaining statewide applicable, statewide planning goals. The plan also plays an important role in guiding the city and prioritizing projects, our long-range planning efforts, and public investment decisions. So how did we get here? So something I really value about this state is you do have a statewide planning program. That's something we don't have in Virginia, and it definitely makes a big difference in guiding land use decisions at the local level. Our statewide planning program calls for each city to plan thoughtfully by adopting a UGB and a Conference of Plan to guide growth within that UGB. Since 1982, the Metro Plan has served as the regional Conference of Plan for Springfield and Eugene within our shared UGB. And as you know, with state legislation requiring us to adopt our own individual UGB and Comp Plan, we began that effort with Envision Eugene. The 2012 recommendation was endorsed by City Council, and it included direction to create a dynamic Eugene-specific Conference of Plan to address emerging needs within the same pillar that called for growth monitoring, that provide for adaptable, flexible, and collaborative implementation. Following this direction, staff began developing the Eugene-specific Conference of Plan along with our UGB. And due to the resource-intensive nature of transferring from the Metro Plan to our own Comp Plan, the plan was broken out into phases. So with the UGB adoption package, we just adopted the first phase. So I'll pass around our first phase chapters here. The chapters with black font are the current adopted chapters that were incorporated with the UGB. The green highlighted areas will be the chapters we'll be focusing on for Phase Two in developing. There will also be a few administrative updates to the chapters from Phase One. Many of the pillars, such as provide for affordable housing, will be addressed in this next phase. In addition, supportive components will be developed for the formal adoption process, including ordinances, legal findings, and amendments to the Metro Plan and Land Use Code. And while not a part of this specific project scope, staff is also working on another important part of our Conference of Plan, which is to create a parcel-specific land use diagram. Right now, we met with our project resource group, and we got some great guidance that to do a little more technical analysis, to really understand the full scope of developing the parcel-specific diagram. So we're working on that now, and we'll be refining a project scope and coming back with a draft public charter and public involvement plan for that. So what if we don't complete our Eugene Comp Plan? So if we should fail to complete this, application and administration of our policies will remain ambiguous and challenging. Eugene will continue to rely on the Metro Plan policies, making the city less efficient in responding to changing conditions and community needs. So I know right now, staff is kind of always going between the Comp Plan that I just passed out and this Metro Plan, and which one are we supposed to look at for this policy and provide guidance for? A lot of the policies are just outdated since they were developed in the 80s or are framed for the region rather than Eugene specifically. And some policies are just absent or missing altogether and do not reflect our community's vision. Lastly, this would be a lost opportunity to address issues through our local policies. So going into a little of the Draft Project Charter first. So on, as you may recall from your work session on Urban Reserves and Clear and Objective, so we're going to kind of follow that same framework for reviewing that. The Draft Project Charter outlines major deliverables and how they will be created. A great deal of work has been done by community members, staff, planning commissioners, and other boards and commissions to lay a foundation for the content of these chapters. Because of the different levels of preparation, the early months of this project will involve bringing all chapters up to a complete draft. The chapters are grouped into topic areas, as you can see here, to allow for more focused engagement. The groups on the left-hand side will build on previous outreach and work with subject matter experts to develop the initial drafts. These drafts will then go through workshops with representatives from boards, commissions, and local partners, including neighborhood associations, to further refine the goals and policies prior to additional community input. Neighborhoods are really important stakeholders for these first groups of chapters, so we are working diligently with human rights and neighborhood involvement to figure out the best way to involve them. The right-hand side shows groups that were adopted with Phase One of the Conference of Plan, and they will require primarily administrative updates that will be done by internal city staff before being also, also they'll be incorporated for public review in the adoption process. And last but not least is outreach and coordination. It's an essential part of the project and is woven throughout the process, and I will talk in a bit more detail with the draft timeline and Draft Public Involvement Plan. I'll pass out the timeline now. So this is, provides a really summarized overview of the draft process that we're proposing to complete the second phase of our Comp Plan. It's anticipated to take about 18 months. Outreach and coordination efforts at the top will involve a variety of stakeholders, including Eugene and Lane County, local subject matter experts, and representatives from a variety of stakeholders. Currently, we are working on providing updates and refining our project planning tools, which is our new day. And based on feedback from decision makers, we are scheduled to give a presentation to City Council on this as well on May 30th, and we plan to provide a memo to Lane County to inform them of the proposed process. We are working on developing the initial draft chapters for the Housing and Livability Group, which is the green arrows on the slide. This is really building on previous drafts that were developed from a 2015 workshop and planning commission input, along with community input from the Envision Eugene process. This work will also involve collaborating with subject matter experts to make sure these chapters are up to date and still reflect our community's vision. For the Equity and Resiliency chapters, in the yellow arrows, the University of Oregon's Partnership for Disaster Resilience will provide best practice research and assist us with developing the initial drafts. Because of the extensive range of topics, each of these chapter groups will have a workshop with a variety of stakeholders. So we'll have one workshop where we'll focus on housing and livability, and then we'll come back with another workshop and focus on equity and resiliency. And the formal adoption process will involve both the city of Eugene and Land County for application to land outside the city limits but inside our UGB. Planning Commission's role in this, so the Planning Commission has two members assigned as project resources for this project, and they will provide input and guidance throughout the process along with the full commission. And currently, that is Commissioners George, Taylor. The Eugene Planning Commission alone will review and provide input on our Project Charter and Public Involvement Plan. While we're welcoming input from Lane County, we recognize they have staff resource constraints, and we're kicking off a lot of long-range planning efforts that require their attention and input. Both Eugene and Lane County Planning Commissions will receive updates and provide input on draft documents throughout the process, and they will make final recommendations to the adopting bodies. Our Draft Public Involvement Plan, it follows the same general outline as the last ones you saw recently in your work session. And the foundation of this plan is really focusing on building on the previous engagement envisioning from the Envision Eugene process. This plan also involves collaboration with subject matter experts to develop the initial drafts, workshops with boards, commissions, and local partners to refine the drafts, similar to what is pictured here from the 2015 Comp Plan workshop, and outreach materials and input opportunities, including a public open house and online public comment for the community to review and provide input on the draft chapters. We plan to send regular project updates through a variety of methods, such as sending newsletters, our project webpage, and social media. And we have a beginning list of project stakeholders in our Public Involvement Plan, and we anticipate this list will evolve throughout the project. So some questions for you to consider, these are the same questions that we went over for Urban Reserves and Clear and Objective, and they are included in the Agenda Item Summary. So if you have any suggestions or feedback for the charter or the Public Involvement Plan, if there's anyone missing from the stakeholder list, things such as that. Requested action and next steps. So we're not requesting any specific action today, other than just we welcome your feedback and input on these draft documents. We'll be coming back on June 25th for consideration of approval of the Public Involvement Plan, and that's after, that gives us enough time to receive input and incorporate that into the draft documents. For next steps, we will be going to Eugene City Council on May 30th to get their input on these draft documents, and we will also provide a memo to Lane County in June. So at this point, any questions, comments?
All right, we'll go this way and start with Commissioner Taylor.
Sure you don't want to start?
No, I'll, I'll let you go. I like going last.
You don't, and involved, I look forward to, I do have some kind of more detailed feedback, but I'm not going to do it here afterwards, yeah. One of the things I did notice that's kind of a bigger picture item that I think would be helpful for the public to understand is the description of Housing and Livability chapters versus Equality and Resiliency is being really clear when there's any kind of publication, which chapters fall under which segment. Yeah.
I don't have a vote this time.
Mr. Baker?
Actually, Commissioner Taylor asked my question, which was just to clarify for the community, particularly when you say livability and housing, it's, can be confusing. So yeah, I will.
So I have a few questions, and I don't know if I would call it conserved. I think that this is an ambitious timeline for this many chapters of our comprehensive plan. So I'm just putting that out there. I think that it's a lot of work for, you know, getting done in, what, eighteen months? The other question I had is, and maybe Terry could help me with this, can you tell me about the workshop, the 2015 workshop? Because it's referenced a lot in here, that that's the basis of our thing. How many people were there? Because I don't, I don't remember being at it. So if you could just give me a preface on that.
Sure.
It's the...
Yeah. It's a part of the process, and it's certainly important, but I wouldn't call it the only basis for the work. There's a lot of best practices research that Sarah Allison at the time was doing, and along with a team of planners. So that workshop was Fall 2015. We invited every board and commission that was interested, plus local partners such as the University of Oregon, and the Chamber of Commerce, E-Web, LEP, lots and lots of groups, to send some representatives, and a lot of them did. I would say this room was full. We had these tables separated into corners of the room, and six people around each table, so thirty-ish people. There were two planning commissioners there. Kristen?
Yeah, I was there. Steve, were you there?
Yeah, I think it was the two of us.
It was a full room.
And maybe John.
They, you two, and Steve, have been involved in the comprehensive plan since the beginning of Envision Eugene, and so there has been a lot of work also done by the planning commission resources in the development of those first sets of chapters. And then the Housing and Livability chapters, three of them have already been drafted from previous work but need to be brought up to date, given that a couple of years have passed since those were developed. So happy to give more details.
That could be...
Does that do it?
Yeah. And that's the, the Housing and Livability one, I think that's going to be the one that is going to generate the most interest, and I hope that we can get the public involvement done on that right. And then the second thing that I think is real important is the, you know, the first chapter is our, that's us, basically, because we are the goal one, public outreach. So we need to make sure that we get that right, because the planning commission is our, you know, the public thing. So we want to make sure that we get this, that public involvement right. And I'm real sorry that Bree is not here, because that was her champion, you know, was getting public involvement done right. And so I hope that we can, you know, reach out to who...
That's the third resource, actually.
Yeah.
Thank you for mentioning that.
Yeah.
Bree was on a lot of these meetings.
And so I just want to make sure that we do that right, because there is a perception out there that we're not getting the public input that we need. And I really, I think we get a lot of it, but, you know, also there's perceptions that we need to overcome, and I hope that we can do that in this plan.
So two follow-up items. One, and maybe staff can address this, I would actually take what Commissioner Borowski said in more of a statement and place it as a question in terms of timeline, because a lot of this work actually has been, there's been a lot of work up to today. So that might be a good thing to talk about. I mean, you could briefly discuss it here, but as you move out to the community to basically maybe shed some light on what looks like a very compressed schedule, that there has been work done at earlier phases. And some had, some of the first Phase One informed Phase Two, I mean, it's been comprehensive, there is a network of connection. And the other piece, and then you guys can respond, is the last comment you made, I think it's important, we talk about our involvement in public process, that we're really clear that we're not in charge of it. So just, I mean, there's a, we have a review capacity, and so making sure that the public is actually aware of what planning commission's role is versus the departments and staff.
Mr. Baker?
Yeah, I was going to say also a couple of things. My recollection is we did have, there were some drafts of some of these chapters, like Housing, and I think it may have included Livability, but at the time, there was a decision made not to complete them, given some other pending concerns about, you know, whether the UGB would be expanded or not for Housing. So there was a conscious decision not to complete those at the time, because they might have complicated the passing of the first phase. And I also wanted to say, yeah, we did a great job of organizing our committee, but we relied a lot on staff. Zach did a great job of really putting together some great, you know, a well-thought-out plan for public involvement. So I assume that, you know, he or someone with his expertise would, might be involved in completing the public involvement, or being involved in the public involvement outreach efforts on getting the remaining parts of this completed within the, within the allotted time we have. And he, but I just wanted to compliment that he did a really good job for our committee.
If I can make a comment on the timeline. We've put forward what we think is doable, given the amount of work that's been done and the relationship of this work to other ongoing work. However, this is not one of the projects that council gave us a specific deadline for. So we're being, we're trying to be responsive and supportive to those high priority projects that have been given a deadline, and they're the three that we showed you on the timeline. Clear and Objective, Urban Reserves, and Growth Monitoring have very aggressive deadlines that we're attempting to meet, and this one is supporting all of those projects as best we can.
But there is some flexibility, it sounds.
There is some flexibility, exactly. If it needs more time, I think we can accommodate that.
All right, other questions? Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you.
When I first looked at this package, I thought, gosh, we're going to have a hard time getting through all of this. Usually we get one and a half done correct, you know, in a lot of time, and we got three. So kudos to staff and the commission, which means we have plenty of time for items from commission and staff. Let's do staff first. Yes, please.
Let's see. First of all, I sent out a note a while back about the recruitment process for planning commissioners. We have, we actually have four positions that we're recruiting for. Commissioner Taylor has received enough votes to advance to the reappointment process, which it's made official when council makes a decision. I think that is on June 25th is when that decision is going to be made. So we'll dispense congratulations at the time if that's appropriate. And then there will be five other folks, and that was on the list, who will be doing an interview. And the interviews are going to be May 21st at 6:50 PM in Harris Hall.
Today?
Today.
Yep.
Yeah, time flies. So apparently each application, kind of like last year, this is a new process, and we've talked about this before, but each person gets, I think, three minutes to talk and say whether to be a good candidate, and then council will go deliberate and make their decision June 25th. And then we will have quite a few new planning commissioners, and I don't think we've been in that position before for, certainly not in my recollection. So we've been talking about how we're going to get everybody up to speed. It's not going to happen overnight, obviously. Trainings are not, you know, the timing of certain trainings doesn't always coincide with the timing of new commissioners being seated. But we're going to do the best we can as staff to group everybody together and walk them through some of the basics. We were thinking about already an agenda, I think, right after the planning commissioners are seated, where we'll do basic planning 101, which is, might be kind of cool for you guys to see anyway, since it's been something we've been presenting to neighborhoods a couple of times. And then there are a couple of other things we'd like to walk through to get everybody up to speed as soon as possible. In other news, of course, you all know that the schedule's kind of getting a fall. I know you've been hit with a bunch of polls lately for extra meetings and whatnot, and I just wanted to say thank you again for hanging in there. You guys do a ton of difficult work, and it just doesn't go unnoticed. We talk about that all the time. So this week, let's see, I think, yeah, we've got the interviews tonight, tomorrow evening, you've got a public hearing, of course, and then, let's see here, just checked in on a couple of other things, you're probably aware of it, but it doesn't hurt to throw it out in case it triggers comments. Would I have any one? So the public hearing tomorrow night, that is the appeal of the Capitol Hill PUD, and it does begin at 6:00 PM in Harris Hall. And then following that, on June 4th, that'll be a Monday meeting, 11:30 here, will be deliberations for the Capitol Hill PUD. And we've scheduled a second deliberations meeting, because there's a lot of, a lot of issues, we already know on that one, might take a little time. We've got a second one scheduled on June 12th. In between there, on June 5th, there will be another public hearing session, and that'll be, that's a Tuesday night, also at 6 o'clock. And that'll be the public hearing for the Skier Butte height limitation and a hotel sign. And Will Doughty from, will be leading that, and then there will be a public hearing same night on the Land Use Code Amendment for the separation between retail marijuana uses. And so both those items are coming to us as council requests that we are processing.
I just have a question about the retail marijuana one. I was at that council hearing, and I thought that they were going to try and do it as a, not a land use one, to do it as a different type of process. Did that just not happen?
I don't know the specific details on that. I do know that we are processing the code amendment on that.
Yeah, one of the counselors, Council sample, wanted to do it so it wouldn't go through the land use process, do it some other way. And the city attorney said that there was a different process that could be done. So when it came up on our, I was curious as to why.
Yeah, I can get back to you with details on that, but at this point, we're processing a code amendment.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's probably enough. There's other stuff going on, but...
Any decisions before council that are land used to process?
Yeah, yeah, so council update. Let's see, 21st. Well, right now, we have boards and commission interviews, and I think that's only going to be today. Was scheduled for today and Wednesday. However, Wednesday, some of you may have been paying attention to the Senate Bill 1051 conversation at council. They discussed Senate Bill 1051 on Monday of last week, and that was going to be the deliberations. However, they did not make a decision on that day. They decided that they wanted to talk, they had more questions, for example, about definitions and some other stuff. So they asked staff to respond to those questions, which we are doing by email, which may go out maybe today. And then we'll be having another conversation for whatever follow-up questions they have on Wednesday. So that'll be the new work session. And hopefully, we'll, hopefully we'll have a decision. But just FYI, if council does decide that they want to modify or add some other things that they want to do around Senate Bill 1051, we actually have a really tight timeline to have to squeeze in another public hearing, and then another deliberation for council if they want to do that. So if any of that happens, I can try to keep you in on that.
Would that have to be another planning commission public hearing as well?
Yeah, I think under, I think generally it would not. So it looks like the scope of what you're discussing will be beneficed, so it would not have to be. So let me see, what else have we got here? May 29th is actually going to be a big day at the City Council. There, we currently have planned the Urban Reserves work session, so essentially presenting the same thing that you all heard a while back. So charter, public involvement plan, getting them up to speed, and then following that will be the Clear and Objective housing standards update. But there is an executive session planned for that, for that day, and we don't know how long that will take. So it's possible that one or both of those items could get bumped. They could get bumped to the 7:30 work session, or they could get bumped to a different date. So heads up on that. And then the 7:30 work session, we have the ordinance concerning Edison Elementary School parking, and that's another code amendment that is actually quasi-judicial proceeding for a site-specific code amendment to remove parking requirement. Lot of support for that one, should be okay. Yep. And then May 30th is actually the following day. May 29th is a Tuesday, so that's a special meeting, and it's happening on Tuesday because Monday's a holiday, right? That's Memorial Day. And May 30th, on Wednesday, so the very next day, we'll be talking about comprehensive plan Phase Two, which you just heard about, and also a work session on barriers to housing that council asked us to come back with. So there's a lot of housing stuff going to council, and we're going to try to bring it together into a more unified process.
All right.
So that's a lot.
Items from commission. I went to the CDBG, their last meeting was last Thursday. They had a public hearing, had a recommendation on how they're going to spend this year's allocation of the HUD and home funds. That will be going in front of council sometime in May as well. I'm not, can't remember the exact date, but it was a good, good process, pretty streamlined.
I know we brought up the necessity or lack of necessity, just the question of having co-chair to support you in case something was to happen, or just having it ad hoc. So anyways, we were waiting for Commissioner Travers.
That's right.
Waiting for me for...
Well, we're sure you could have a voice, and if it's relevant, yeah, so it's...
Yeah, so at the last meeting, we talked about that there is no co-chair at this point, because Bree resigned. And do we want to just go through and have a, have no co-chair, or do we want to appoint an interim one? And we thought it would be best to have that discussion when you were here. So that's kind of back around. There wasn't any real consensus going around, I don't think. We're just wondering what your thoughts might be as the needs to have a co-chair or for the remainder of the, you know, until June 30th.
Well, as I see it in June, you're going to be electing a chair and a co-chair.
Right.
And it would seem to me that for the few meetings of which you may not be here, I don't know of any, you could just, we could, you could just name someone to be in at the interim and stand in.
Right.
Which I...
Which is what we did from the last...
Yeah, I would think that that would work sufficient.
Yeah, commission supports that. Yes, that is, you know, eeny, meeny, miny, moe type of a thing.
And also, if you aren't participating, not being around for the current meetings we have, you don't really have a problem either.
Yeah, as of right now, I think I, you know, I don't have any conflicts at all, until that...
If I may, the planning commission elections, the official elections usually happen in August.
Yeah.
So you get the new planning commissioners as plural this time are seated, and then a month later, do the elections generally.
Right, right.
On the last June meeting, June 25th, there are some action items scheduled for approval of the public involvement plans for the three projects that you've heard about. And I know Commissioner Baker's absent that day.
Commissioner Baker's absent that day, so we would need all the rest of you to actually take action on that date, okay?
Yeah.
June 25th.
I thought that was the day you said the new people got seated?
No, they, July. June 30th is the end of fiscal year, and so the new, new term starts July 1.
July 1, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's real important, especially with, again, on these deliberations as well. We need at least four of us in the room, otherwise we're gonna be screwed. One more question?
I think I've also gone on June 4th, but there aren't any deliberations scheduled that day. I'm gonna still check.
Yes, they are, June 4th, 11:30.
Yeah, that's right.
That's right, but there, there were still gonna be four, at least.
Right.
And then if it goes over, it may go over to the next week, given the complication.
And that's Capitol Hill deliberation?
That is correct, and we don't have you down for an absence on that day yet, so you're gonna be out the 4th.
Yeah, I thought I, I think I'd sent Amy, but yeah, that's, I'd have to check my calendar, but I'm pretty sure.
And what is the, what is the deadline for the final decision on Capitol Hill? I can't, does anybody know that off the top of their head? I know it was close.
It's like the 13th or something.
The 13th, okay.
Yeah. Another meeting scheduled on the 12th.
Yeah, okay. All right, anybody else? Go to the order? All right, thanks, everybody. We'll see you tomorrow night.